Good evening, welcome to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning board of appeals public hearings for Monday, February 26, 2018. Before we get to the public hearings portion of the meeting, there's a few house cleaning things we have to take care of. But when we do get to the public hearings, I will read the appeal into the minutes. The applicant comes to the table, tells us what they want, why they need it. If you're here for a variance, it is incumbent upon you to give us a hardship for your variance. If you're here for a special permit, the hurdle is not quite that high, but we need to know that it is less detrimental than existing conditions. First order of business, did everyone have a chance to review the minutes?
Yep.
Got to get a motion.
Motion to a true.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next is, I have one bill.
Telegramming, is that again?
What's that? Yeah, in the back, yes. Isn't that? The Worcester Telegram Gazette, for $389.65 for notices for prior meetings. Can I get a motion?
Move to still payment.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There should be a place for them to sign it. First hearing is a continuation of the hearings from November 27th and January 29th, 579 585 Lake Street. They have sent us a letter asking for continuance until the April 30th meeting, and extending, obviously extending the deadline for us to make a decision. Can I get a motion? If there's nothing to discuss?
I move to approve the request for an extension.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? First 6:30 hearing is to hear the appeal of Dennis Yaw, 46 Boylston Street, Shrewsbury, Mass, for a special permit from Section 6, Table 1, to conduct an in-home professional office in a Residence B1 district upon property located at 46 Boylston Street. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 16, Plot 181000. Is okay. And if I butchered your name, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Dennis Yaw. I'm looking for a special permit so I can have my law office, which has been a very spurious location in town for, since 1994. I moved here in 1974. This is my second career for me. I started off and spent 39 years in the computer business and passed the bar when I turned 50 in 1994. Type of practice I have does not require clients to come to my office. Most of the work that I do is for institutions. University of Mass Medical Center and all of its entities, Harrington Memorial Hospital and its various psychiatric units, various nursing homes, Shrewsbury Nursing Home I do work for. Most of the people that I deal with have either some sort of disability, most of them are mentally ill, some are physically ill and not capable of making informed decisions. So, on a typical day, this morning I was in probate court and got a guardianship for a gentleman who is at a psychiatric unit at University of Mass Medical Center. Tomorrow I'm having Clint, I think, a commitment hearing. And that's what I do. I don't have people come to my office, even when I had a regular office. I was down at 7 Grafton Street since 1999, and Joe Farrell, great guy, wanted to get rid of the, wanted to get rid of the place. It was a great office, September of last year, August of last year, I underwent back surgery, followed by a week and a half later with a heart attack. So, I was out of work for almost three months. And a decision was made at that time that I couldn't afford to continue with the rent and the infrastructure cost at 7 Grafton Street, and wanted to move my office home. We have just me, I have no staff, other than my wife who does my bookkeeping. We use the, it's a four-bedroom ranch house. I know it used to be called the Lucy House, for some of you folks that know the area. There's no structural changes necessary, there's no parking issues since I don't have clients coming to my office. I may have one come for a will once a quarter or something like that, but nothing that would create any interference with traffic. The turkeys do worse than I would ever do. We have set the office up, my wife works, like I said, does the books, and we have that in, which is the fourth bedroom. It's also a laundry room. That's one of the reasons we bought the property, because we wanted everything on the first floor. We lived over on Surrey Lane, and we just, we're getting old and couldn't go up and down the stairs. Both my wife and I have had, as I indicated, back surgeries. So, all I want to do is just have myself just a desk, and I have it sitting in the front window of the main living area. And there's another desk, and a copy machine, and a fax machine sitting in the laundry area where my wife works. So, I've seen no actual impact at all on traffic, or people coming into the facility. We just, I just don't have any. Now and again, as I said, there's a few that come in for a will or something like that for a conference, but very seldom.
Any questions?
No.
I'm looking at the plan, and I see proposed dormer, or none of these changes are being done to the building?
That was a plan that I got from Joe Farrell.
So, this was already done previously?
Yeah.
So, you're not asking for any?
When they moved the house, they expanded it. They built the house right behind, well, actually where 46 Boylston Street was, they moved the house forward and adjacent St. Pierre built the house there. And whatever you see on that plan is what they had when they moved the house.
Okay, so no changes to the house?
Any one intended, so it should be heard on this. Okay, there'll be no further questions or comments. We'll take it under advisement. You'll be notified by our decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second hearing is to hear the appeal of We Can Doing Business's Shrewsbury Farmer Market, 38 Stone Hill Road, Shrewsbury, Mass, for a variance and special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning body law under Section 7-E and Section 6, Table 1, to place signs three feet from the property line and conduct the farmer's market to the Residence B1 district on property located at 59 South Street. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 23, Plot 135000. Welcome. Please state your names for the record.
Mackenzie May.
Melissa Hollenbeck. We are both the co-market managers of the Shrewsbury Farmers Market. We are volunteers. We're here to ask for permission to move the farmer's market, Shrewsbury Farmers Market, to Veterans Inc. We've looked at some of the letters and concerns of the abutters. And one thing that we want to make very clear is that we are not here to address any concerns regarding Veterans Inc. programming or their property. We're not Veterans Inc. Veterans Inc. was not able to have any, the executive director couldn't be here, or any friends in the department. So, we're just here strictly being able to say what we can do as a farmer's market, what we've done in the past, and what we continue to try and do to make it safe for everyone. We understand the concerns about the traffic. I live off of Route 20, and we understand that things have changed in Shrewsbury quite a bit. 20 years I've lived here, Shrewsbury has changed so much, particularly South Street. We have Price Chopper at one end, we have, Weagles Farm is now a housing development, we have Floral School, we have, that used to be a little small family grocery store is now a large bank. We have a lot of changes that have happened on South Street. So, it is becoming a very large, busy thoroughfare, to the point that even the WTRA, WRTA, has a bus stop on Julio Drive. They don't do that unless there is a large need for, you know, their services there with the hospital, the rehab hospital, and the assisted living, and other, the doctor's offices. There are a lot of employees and stuff going there. So, the street does get a lot of traffic. But we're here to discuss what we can do as a farmer's market, not what Veterans Inc. has or will be doing in the future, again, because we are not Veterans Inc.
So, you have, before you and your packets, the maps of our proposed layout. And to address the potential concerns for traffic, we have proposed that we would have separate entrance and egress from the property to help maintain a flow. The entrance is indicated on your map as the driveway closest to Main Street, and the one closest to Route 9 would be the exit. We are prepared and happy to hire police detail for the first market, just like we have done in the past, to assess if there is a need for that type of management of the traffic flow. And based on the opinion of said police officer, we could either continue or not continue that assistance. We will have roughly 30 vendors.
Is that consistent, what you currently have?
Correct. Yep, we have never had more than 27, 30 at most, I think, when you can take into account the community tables. We will follow, just as we always have, all of the fire codes to allow for 12-foot fire breaks between every seven tenths. And there won't be any major changes to the way that the market has run for the past four years, this being our fifth.
Again, one of the differences between our farmer market and others is that we do require all our vendors to be insured. The market itself is insured. We also, like I said, follow the American Building Code and the International Fire Codes as well with the fire breaks. The other thing, Mackenzie and I, we are on-site at all times. Some market, farmer markets are just a clump of farmers getting together, but we are literally on-site, we are managers. She takes the morning half, I take the afternoon, we kind of overlap in the middle. But we are there constantly making sure that, A, there are no dogs, B, but also because of the heat, we're looking to make sure that all our patrons are safe, that there's no heat stroke, that there are no wandering and lost children. You know, we're looking to make sure that things are running smoothly with our vendors themselves. So, we are there managing it. Also, at the end of the night, I walk the property, and I pick up trash, trash even if it's not from my farmer markets, some of the stuff I've picked up. But anyway, even from the senior centers. I was out there in a thunder and lightning storm this year, and one of the town employees was a little concerned about me. But I, we are there, we take concern, we take care of the property, and we're very concerned about our patrons and the safety of everyone involved. And that's not going to change.
Also in the proposal is to have music between the hours of 4:00 and 6:30. That is the broad timeline of the music. Generally, it runs for about two hours. And this is nothing different from what we've had at the Ski Ward property, one or two people with a guitar. And they do have an amp, because otherwise the guitars won't work. So, it's a very low volume on the amp, just to be enjoyed by people within the market. And if you're standing at the edge of the market, generally you can't really hear the music. So, we work to make sure that it's not a nuisance to the neighbors.
The other, there is one slight difference from any of the markets that we've had, and that we will be having an outside portable bathroom facility. We want to, you know, have people outside, we, again, we want to just, we're not Veterans Inc. So, we wanted to have the porta potty. And we propose that to have that at the far end of the parking lot away from the South Street entrance. And if need be, we'll hide it with, you know, lattice work or whatever. It will be locked when the market is not open, and it will be cleaned once a week. We really don't anticipate it being used much, but it reads to be there as per Board of Health reasons, so we do have to have it.
The only question I have, this will be your fourth year operating?
This is our fifth year, yeah.
Can't count. Has there ever been police required?
No.
Any complaints or anything like that over the years?
The closest thing we had was last year, a woman left her wallet at one of our vendors, and somebody, because we were so close to the police station, actually took the wallet to the police station. Normally, they would take it to us as the farmer market managers, but we spent hours combing the market for it. So, we went to the fire sta, but so really, no, we've never had any, we've never had an emergency for ambulance as well, or fire. So, we have been really, there have been times where we would see an elderly person or a family, you know, a mother with a toddler, looking a little peaked. We would bring him in under our tent, have him sit down, get water, you know, make sure that they were comfortable leaving, you know, helping them carry their packages to the car, whatever, so.
Nor has there ever been any need for a standard police detail?
I have a couple of questions. I know you've been in different locations before, and there wasn't a need for a police detail, but South Street has gotten to be a very busy street. And from my say, 4:00 to 6:00, that traffic backs up from that light at Main Street, probably all the way up to Veterans Inc. So, from my standpoint, I think maybe a police detail might be needed, just to see how everything flows. Then maybe you could go from there or whatever, I don't know. But it is a very busy street, and for safety reasons, I think there should be a police detail.
I agree. If I could respond, we absolutely plan to have a police detail at the first market. And if he believes, he or she believes it's necessary for them to be there, we will continue.
The other thing that we didn't mention with the market is when you look at the size of it, it's much more based on patterns of traffic. Our busiest times are from when we were first open, and this year will be 2:30. So, from 2:30 to 4:30 is our busiest time. It starts slowing down, and then from 5:00 to 6:30, it's dead. We've talked about closing the market earlier, but many people do want it later.
But now you're in a high-traffic area.
Yeah.
So, that might extend it a little bit further. Another concern is sign placement. Where would those be located exactly?
Those would be located at least three feet back from the road, and we would work with Dennis, we've spoken with him about this, on-site to determine specifically where it will not block the line of vision.
Right, that's why we weren't, we didn't want to go with having one big one. We wanted to actually be able to see where it would be. And with the snow at the time, we really couldn't do that. But also playing with it, you know, moving it.
And is there a lease contract that you have with Veterans Inc., or is this donated to you?
This will be donated.
Okay.
I have some questions. For the traffic detail that you're offering to have at your first market, would, so you're proposing to do that and then talk with the officer and see if he believes, he or she believes it's warranted to have additional detail at further farmer's markets? Would you be willing to do that, but also have them come at a later one, just to see if things are different, maybe the fourth farmer's market?
Sure.
Because things could definitely change, as Paul just pointed out. You're going to get high traffic if you're able to do this, and you may, you may have a busy time from 2:30 to 6:30, which would be wonderful for you. So, that's one question. And then, you'd mentioned that you're both there for the first half and the last half, which is wonderful. What happens, what's the backup plan if one of you can't be there?
That does often happen.
Once, actually.
Did it?
What?
We're very dedicated.
I, yeah.
We just figure it out amongst each other, and there is always a market manager on-site.
Because I don't know about what's happened with Veterans Inc. right now and what they offer. They may also offer someone on-site during their events, I don't know. I'm hoping you are there the whole time, and if you're not, someone else is there. And I know you're there for the vendors, but you may have some additional work to do to make sure.
Oh, yeah, surely.
No one's wandering onto the other properties and things like that. So, if you had a backup plan, that would be nice to know. How, would it really hurt you to not have the music?
So, well, let's start with the first question. What was your first question? Because I went to answer it immediately.
Well, the backup plan for if one of you aren't there?
Right, we do have that, we already have, yeah, yeah.
So, just an assurance that someone, whoever runs the market is there at all times? You can all see that?
I come from a retail market background, from a drugstore, and it was against the law to have it not managed. So, that is the way I approach any event that I do, whether it be legal invaders or anything. I literally am there. And so, we do have, we had one episode, and we knew a month in advance, we had hired one of our volunteers to be there that day. We also alerted all of our vendors, they had emergency phone numbers, everyone was alerted to it.
Is this written down somewhere, or we can see it?
That we are always on-site?
No. What your backup plan is?
What my, what my, what our backup plan is. I'm certain we could draft that, and we could give you the names and the contact information of the people who...
I think that would be helpful.
Absolutely, we'd be happy to. Because we have worked with a small group of people since the market's inception to help its vision and planning, and so they, given extraordinary circumstances.
And then we also have vendors that have been there from day one.
Having their phone numbers makes it easier for us.
Sure, absolutely. And I recall, remembered what your first question was, which was about a follow-up?
Detail? Oh, yes.
Yes, so, sure. We'd be happy to have that, because you're right, there is a seasonality to the offerings.
In your first one.
In the first market, it's very exciting, but there's not corn and tomatoes and peaches.
But no food.
There's food, no. And then this year, we'll get it up and bring it up, is that, we do have a Wednesday that is 4th of July. So, the market will be open. Probably will be busier that day. So, we do know that we'll have to have, most likely, a detail that day.
I also, but I don't know. I hope so, but I wonder.
I'm sorry, if it would be busy.
If it would be busy.
So, I have two more questions, sorry. I wonder, I'm just wondering what the impact would be to you if there were no music? So, if you could share your thoughts on that, that would be good to know. How important is it for you to have the music?
So, personally, it's not very important. But from the community aspect, just the same reason that we chose to look elsewhere, from the wonderful Band-Aid that was provided by the town last year, seeking grass and a vibrant community feel, so that your patrons hang out for more than the 15 minutes if they can...
And buy more.
And buy more, right? So, the music, it helps to bring that.
Also, we do have community groups there that are providing information, the garden clubs there, the library, they have little activities for the kids as well, so. Again, the music, I personally hate it, but it's just more work for us. But again, the community has told us, like, where's the music, you know? And they were actually very disappointed about it.
Not having it here when it was here temporarily last year. And that leads me to my last question. Can you describe the traffic directing that occurred here, if there was any, when you had it here temporarily? Did you have a detail at the first one, or?
We did. He was very bored, but very well-fed. So, he said he did not necessarily need to be here. We would hear from somebody every now and again that there wasn't parking close enough, but never that there were any issues with entering.
Okay, and I'll stop.
And from what we could see, we could actually see the road from where we were, and, you know, I couldn't see any issues where there were any backup, you know, or any problems.
Thanks, I may comment again, I don't worry.
No, nothing right now. At least I got all mine.
On the traffic flow, you want to use the driveway to the north as your entrance?
I'm bad at directions.
The one closest to the Main Street?
Main Street.
Yes, the one that's closest to Main Street, we want to have that be the entrance.
And how do you, so that people will go in that entrance and then down to the parking lot? And then walk back up to where the...
They'll be walking up to, we have the map here where, there are several scenarios, but they'll be walking to the grassy area there.
Right.
Yeah.
I think, I'm looking at this one.
Yes, yes, that's fine, yes, yes. So, they'll be walking up there.
So, when you're not there, I mean, both driveways are used as an entrance, I believe.
Exactly, exactly.
So, how are you going to distinguish between your traffic and Veterans Inc.'s traffic? And will you be preventing people from going in the other entrance?
When we're there, because we're kind of maintaining the outside, we would literally be having signs, you know, saying, you know, entrance. And then we would be working with, imagine with Veterans Inc., alerting their staff members or whoever might come on-site at that time, that on Wednesdays, the traffic pattern in and out would be different. I don't anticipate it, it's something pretty easy compared to what we went through with the parking lot here and even at Ski Ward. We do have, planned to have signs, and we were told by Patty Sheehan that they would not fall under the variance because they're traffic signs. So, and also if we need to have traffic, you know, little flag-waver kind of people down there, you know, we'll do that. But there is another parking lot down this way, so if for some bizarre reason, if Veterans Inc. visitors want to park, they, you know, have that option there. But, you know, we're going to kind of be somebody there dissuading them, you know, enter down here. And the reason for that is that there is a slight rise on the one that's further away from Main Street. So, it is kind of hard to kind of see where the Veterans Inc. entrance is. And then also, it is closer to the bus stop area on Julio Drive, so that's just kind of...
That's all I have at this time. Anyone in attendance wish to be heard? State your name for the record, please.
Ernest Cameron. I live probably at the property most affected by this, at 49 South Street. And the side yard in my backyard orders this property. Veterans Inc. does outdoor events there now, it's not many, but there's a lot of lessons learned over this. They agreed that they don't use the driveway closest to my house when they have events, because they agreed it is a nuisance to me and my family. Without me even saying anything, they said this is definitely too much, so they don't use that access at all. I wish somebody from Veterans Inc. could be here, because there's a lot of things that are, we learn from these events. The events, when they set up, are noisy. There's only a few a year, I'm sure I'm noisy, I try to be a good neighbor, you know, and I'm sure I'm noisy to them sometimes as well. But it's very few, so. They have wonderful events. I take my children to some, they have a great time. It's well-managed, there's always someone, it's just as they're saying, there's always somebody there. It's usually either Vin or Dennis, they're right there. And even with that, we've had incidents, they borrowed some electricity from our garage. We went over to Vin, let him know, hey, you know, I'm... We went over to Vin, let him know, hey, you know, I'm a veteran. My wife used to work for New England Shelter for homeless veterans. So we are very acceptance of the cause. And said, we have no problem with it. They were very upset it happened. They weren't aware it hap- it, it happened. So even with tight military structured controls, things fall through the cracks during these events. The, they applied for a special variance a few years back. I think I'm one of the only, if not the only resident that was in full support of it. I, again, unfortunately, since then, in these events, there have been problems that I, I can no longer be in support of this at all. In fact, I'm direct opposition. I did submit a letter. Did you want me to reread that?
We have, we have a copy.
Okay. And it, and it has a lot of my complaints. And before you make a decision, I'd really appreciate it if you were going to vote to approve this, to just spend ten minutes where we grill outside and eat outside. Because it is mere feet from the parking lot that they want to use with zero vegetation. And it's risen above, and our area is risen above. So they stare at each other and even a privacy fence is not going to block this. Car doors shutting. They echo and it's very. I, I, I really want you to go there and, and see. They echo, you know, and it's where we live and it's fine. But, and people holding conversations. You easily hear them and they hear us. Adding several cars during this. And, and my family likes to eat early. We eat usually between four thirty and five thirty. New England, we hunker down in the winter. We try to enjoy the summer months. I think that with all the people coming to this parking lot staring directly at us while we're grilling and eating and the closest cut through, they're not going to take, and we learned this from past events that they have. They're not going to take the road. They cut through right by my property. I mean, probably five feet away from my stone wall. To get to your exactly where they hold all their events. I know exactly where you're setting up because that's where they set up all their events. After these, during these events, nothing ever bad happens. It's always wonderful events. In fact, we trump into people we know from town. All wonderful people. There's nothing ever bad that happens. Now, you, you like to go with lessons learned where there's never been an issue, but you've never been in a residential neighborhood. You were at Ski Ward with not a neighbor in sight, basically. And then you were at the senior center where your neighbor is the police. Of course, you're not going to have any issues. There's never any issues when there's events at this. However, afterwards is when we've had issues. Later that afternoon, later that night. Or people, one of the reasons they don't like to use that driveway anymore is when people leave, they throw trash into our yard over the stone wall. After events, just using the driveway normally, we find, we're constantly finding beer bottles, beer cans, alcoholic bottles, food trash, cigarette paraphernalia, every type, layers, butts, boxes, rename it. They just litter our yard. They, I, to ask me to, it's, it's a few events a year, or even a half a dozen events a year, which they don't even have that many for outdoor events. Completely tolerable to me. For the most part, it will usually go over to them. Afterwards, we don't use our outdoors because, and they're not very large events, but we don't use them because it is such. Everybody's staring at us. It's very loud. We don't use our outdoors during these things. But to ask us to give up our outdoors every single week, every Wednesday until six thirty P M., I think that's way too much to ask of us. I really do. And I, I beg of you, if you're gonna approve this, spend ten minutes where we grill and eat. And you will clearly see, yes, this is a huge intrusion on these people's privacy. You really will. It, it's, there's no vegetation. You're staring directly at us. And the building, the way it's set back in the open field, the sound bounces right back at us. It really does. I, I see other neighbors here and, and they're going to say the same things. Again, I'm a veteran. I support Veterans Inc. wholeheartedly. And there have been some, many activities that we have let slip and we talked to them personally because they're underfunded. I believe that a hundred percent. And they need donations. And there's a lot of things that, that people don't need to know to, to hurt those damn donations because they do need them. However, again, to ask me and my family to give up every Wednesday outdoor dining or grilling during the whole warm season when we live in New England, that is a, a lot to ask of somebody. And if you think I'm exaggerating, please come to my house and see what I'm talking about. Before you vote on this, please. After an event, we had a couple of incidences at my house after an event. Where we ended up missing a gas grill and we ended up missing a bicycle. I'm not saying it was from people from the event. It could be a coincidence. Again, these are wonderful people that go to the events. People that I know from town, ninety-nine point nine percent of them. Was one percent of the people there at this thing noticed an Easy Targets and took them? Possibly. I don't know. It could be a coincidence, but I don't want more of it. Also, after an event, my son Kate was riding his bike around the event. He likes, my kids love them. They do. Unfortunately, we had to stop this because he's riding his bike around the event. He came in the house. My young son had said, hey, Dad, I'm scared. There's a man in the front seat of a car and a man in the back and they're following me around. I said, I'm sure you're just being paranoid. I'm sure everything's okay. There's a lot of, a lot of this happens. They drive around, they'll pick up their friends from Veterans Inc. or whatever. So I said, just to be on the safe side, why don't you play in the driveway for a little while, play some basketball or something? A short while later, I look outside and a, sure enough, this car is driving up the driveway of Veterans Inc., really close to my driveway. He has slowed right down. I raced outside and this car sped away. It was after an event. Again, ninety-nine point nine percent, and, and I don't know if these people were at the event. But the coincidences of the bad things that had happened to my family after these events, it's not while they're there and Ben Perone's there managing them, Dennis Larry, all their staff is there and they're making sure everything's going great. Sure. Absolutely. It's afterwards, after they leave that these bad things have happened to my family. The noise, as I said, it does echo across there. And, you know, my noise echoes over there as well. I know it does. You know, a few times a year, half a dozen times a year, a dozen times a year. I'm a good neighbor. I'll, I'll suck it up. I'm sure my neighbors suck it up for me. But every Wednesday throughout the whole warm season, we're supposed to suck this up? That is a huge ask of us. I think I have almost everything else that I want to cover in my letter. But I did want to address the, I'm surprised that you brought, I, I, I thought more planning would go into this since Veterans Inc. does have outdoor events there already. And they, they shut off the driveway to my side of, of the property. And I'm surprised you haven't communicated more about things like this and the problems that they have with these events. So I, I, I feel like if you did do this, it's going to be lessons learned all over again for me because you haven't even touched base with them on what they've learned. Or what it seems like because you want to use that side of the driveway and they don't. I, I guess that's all I have for now. I think everything else is in the letter that I already submitted. And again, I just beg of you, if you are going to approve this, spend ten minutes on my, where I eat, please.
I'm sorry. Well, we can both respond. One of the things that we actually sent Mr. Kramer's wife an email. It was the only email I had access to in January because we really wanted to find out what their concerns were and their, their thoughts were. Veterans Inc., like I said, we have not, we're not part of them. So they're kind of letting us to see what would be, work well with the farmer's market. We, you know, we're not aware of the shutting down the driveway. When we were looking at the traffic situation and the traffic flow, our biggest concern at that point was that we did not want to have accidents on South Street.
I think their biggest.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
We didn't want to have accidents on South Street as they were coming up, the rise, looking for the hill. This was actually something that was suggested by a town employee that we really needed to look at that rise as, as being a potential high accident rate area as people coming up to it. So, you know, again, the Veterans Inc., as we've stated before, we are not Veterans Inc. The events, the programming that they've had, that is their concern. The farmers, any of the farmer's markets that we've had, last year was the only time that we actually had people that lingered around. And often it was because one elderly woman was having a driver pick her up. So we'd kind of sit there and wait with her. The farmer's market is the type of thing people get there, go home and make dinner and it's over with. Nobody's lingering around afterwards. It's not like, you know, the music, you know, you want to sit around and chat kind of thing. It's literally, you want to get the heck out of there. My vendors want to get the heck out of there. They're, you know, they're zoom, 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 they're out. I'm not gone until the last car is out of our parking. I mean, this, it'll be a little difficult because I won't know who are actually veteran employees or whatever at the parking lot. But everyone is gone, so we really don't have a problem. You know, I'm sorry.
And so we have talked with Veterans Inc. at length about these issues since for the past three months now, we've been having this conversation. And we would have been very, very happy to have the conversation with the, the Butters prior to three days ago, when we had our first contact. We certainly would be amenable to a conversation to exclude use of that driveway. If that is the main concern, we can work with Veterans Inc. And I would take into advi- into account advice from the police department about how they think it would be best to handle the traffic there. But if that is the one stipulation and would preclude people from being eye to eye with the grill area and that, then, then we would be happy to make those adjustments. And as Missy stated previously, we certainly don't leave the property until we know that there is no trash left behind. So that would not be a concern. And this is a market that does not have any alcohol sold at it.
The other, the other concern was the noise issue. I'm sorry.
No, no.
The noise issue. I, I don't, Veterans Inc., from what I've been told from the building inspector and I think, believe you guys have to get notification that they have these events, which they haven't had for a couple of years. And, and my sense as a resident, when they've had these things, there are these huge, like, veteran events with like a big fair, you know, information and music and that kind of thing. We're, you know, as the map that we have, we're, ideally, we'd like to have a small section of a lawn down there. The noise, I think, would actually be broken by the tree line that is there. The other thing is, the market's not loud at all, even with the music. My rule of thumb for music is if I can't have a conversation with you, then it's too loud. And I go over and tell them to turn it down, which I don't think we've ever had to do. The gentleman that we usually get to play is, I think, Bruce Andrews. He does the senior center a lot, a lot of folk music sing-along kind of thing. So it's, it's not really loud. But again, if music was not an option, that's fine with me. The vendors are not hawking. That is actually a rule of our farmer market that we, we very strictly enforce. And I've had a local vendor very angry at us. We do not allow them, the yelling, that kind of thing. The kids are not running around. We're doing very quiet craft activities. So it's, it's relatively a quiet event. And then as far as people cutting, cutting across this property, this is the, the first I've heard of this from the back parking lot across. It's very easily, we have traffic cones, we have stakes, we have sawhorses, we have signs, we have chains, fluorescent orange chains, that we can put up there to attempt not for people to go there, including, you know, signs, please, private property that, you know, this, you know, should not be, you know, you should not be going on the property, property kind of thing. But the other issues with the Veterans Inc., we, we can't address those.
Anybody else? State your name for the record. Hold on, hold on one second. Other neighbors here? Go ahead, ma'am. State your name for the record, please.
It's Lucinda Benoit. My mother lives at eighteen Founders Road, but I'm the owner of the home. I'm directly behind the Veterans building. And in the summertime, it's very loud when they have events. It echoes down the hill, so I was more concerned. Are you having this in front of the Veterans Inc. building?
Yeah.
Or behind?
The map is a lot.
The building's here. My, my mother looks directly at the building. So when we're standing in our yard, it's directly above us. So the sound travels down into the Founders Road neighborhood, so the music does travel. The other thing is, unfortunately for him, but where would the portable toilets be? Because I've taught high school for a long time and when those get cleaned, it is a horrible stench. So he would not be grilling, nor would my mother be grilling or anyone along the backside if they were located close to the property line. And that smell stays for several hours when those toilets get cleaned out. So I have a major concern for an elderly mother living with the noise. That whole back street of Founders Road, not against Mrs. Goleman, but they're all elderly. So this is going to be a major noise thing for them. Every one of them, the youngest age of seventy, along that entire stretch. So the noise is a factor. The other concern I have is that you have fresh vegetables and fruit. And the town of Shrewsbury has built so much that we have deer coming into the yard, coyotes, foxes, that my mother's petrified. You know, that now I have produce, so is there a dumpster there that these animals are going to get into the produce? How is this going to be taken care of with the trash? Because it's a major draw. I mean, we had three deer in, in the yard. I had a fox trying to get into the pool. So she gets scared. You know, I may own the house, but she's the one living in it. I grew up there. I love the town of Shrewsbury. But I do have major concerns that this is a big business and it's in a very residential area. So the music, I have concerns, portable toilets, excess food with the animal life that's around there. And just her safety, like, let's, Lambly to Drive is right near there. Wasn't there a home invasion there today? So this is getting closer with more and more people within a neighborhood. And I, I have concerns for all the elderly in that neighborhood. There's a lot of widows on that street.
Can you give me a couple of names?
Oh, stop. Oh, my gosh.
No, but I, I just, I do have a concern for that. I mean, I, I think it's a great concept, but to know every Wednesday and the music and she get, she'll be very scared, knowing that there's more people moving around and strangers. Veterans have walked through the woods. I mean, it is a pretty steep hill, but they have been lost and come down. And, you know, it is a major concern on my part for my mother's safety.
Could be. As far as the trash, that is one of, one of the first few questions the town asked us four years ago, how the trash was going to be handled. In our farmer market rules, all our vendors are responsible for removing their trash. We do have site, onsite trash barrels and recycling. I personally take those home every night. They go in my Shrewsbury Town Trash. I also separate the recycling. But also, at the end of the market, I go around. And this is one of the benefits of the bag, plastic bag van, is those little plastic tabs when the vendors have those little things. I would literally be picking those blowing things around at the Ski Ward parking lot. I was traipsing through Poison Ivy and, and Overflow Creek. So there is no trash. If anything, it will be cleaner when I'm done. And this year, I'm actually going to buy little pincher things because I've been picking up some pretty stanky stuff that has nothing to do with my farmer market. They're buried in there at Ski Ward and here. And so there is no excess food whatsoever. We, the vendors take the leftover food with them or it is donated. And then, sometimes when people are, you know, shucking their corn or they're losing their little pea or whatever, I'm picking these up. I'm literally picking peas, individual peas up at the end of the night.
So, what time are you actually there? I guess that was never stated.
What time are we actually there? The market itself operates from, sorry, 2:30 to 6:30. They come in earlier to set up. Leaving is, they're in and out, I would say fifteen minutes, depends. But they want to get out of there, and there's not as much to set up. So, it's probably six forty-five to seven o'clock, the very latest. And then, setting up, what do we...
I arrive around one, 1:30, once the vendors get familiar with their spaces. And they're setting up until the market starts at 2:30. And when we have had music in the past, music usually is not going the first hour or so of the market because these musicians have jobs too. And so, they usually come in 3:30 or 4:00. And we'll play for an hour, hour and a half. And then, pack up and go. They're gone before the market ends.
So, it's a good eight hours from start to finish?
Yeah, I guess it would be.
Yep. And this is, this is having, as you stated, you know, another, a commercial operation. This is alongside the other commercial operations that are already existing right there. So, it's certainly the smallest of anything that's going on in the community.
State your name for the record.
I'm Robert Goleman. I live on Founders Road, and thank you for notifying us about this particular development. And I guess, we've been living there for a number of years. And I'm not going to bring in Veterans Inc. because it's a separate entity. But in the beginning, it was very loud. It was, but they, I haven't heard them for like, I don't know, four or five years. And I sit outside in the summertime. I'm always concerned about safety, I agree with you. I mean, but there's safe, I mean, there's ordinary problems in any neighborhood. Up the street, there was, you know, high school kids. I remember one night after a party and whatever. So, I myself, you know, am really to live with it, not only live with it, but appreciate it for the community, to be honest. But if there's something that these people need to take care of that they don't know about, I think you look like the kind of people that will take care of it. I mean, obviously, it's something else that's in the neighborhood. And I have a lot of trust in you guys to make sure that you settle those problems because it is, you know, it can be a problem. But for myself, I kind of support it. And when I've been to the other, when I've been to the other farmer's markets, it is very quiet. I'm in there and I'm out of there. I mean, I don't hang around there. I feel badly that, you know, that such a concern about it. But if you people can, you know, clear up the concerns of these people because the summertime is a loud time. You sit outside in the backyard, you can hear everything. There was a development about ten years ago, I heard everything.
Everything coming down between the trees and the whatever. I mean, it was, it's awful. But once they took care of it, I have to say, it really just wasn't bad. And we hear everything from Veterans Inc., we do. And I say it's not, it isn't bad, but I mean, I think you look like the kind of people or that you can pinpoint something and take care of it. I have a little problem also with the music because we live so close. You know, I don't know anything about it.
I mean, it's, but, you know, I'd rather play my own music than your music. But I mean, that's your, that's, again, things that you need to iron out yourself. I just want to say that I'm in support of it.
In the back row, anybody? State your name for the record.
Beverlyne McGlynn. I live at Forty-three South Street. I'm not totally prepared for this, but Ernie had come over today, and I totally forgot that this was going on tonight. But, you know, he had some major concerns, which I do for him, more so than myself. The only thing that I'm worried about, like, I live right on the street, right next to him. Traffic does build up. And sometimes it's hard to get in or out because some people just don't let you out or there's such a long line that nobody can move. So, you're kind of, you're sitting in your driveway, waiting to get out. The other thing I have too is, you're obviously going to have people parking in the big parking lot, correct? Like, in the big, I backwait onto that. I'm a very nosy person as far as when it comes to areas that, you know, there's nobody living at. Like, or, you know, I've seen over the course of time, I've lived there now eight years. And I've seen shady characters come on, you know, in the winter, or sit there for a couple of hours or whatever at night. I always call the police. I don't let it go. But I'm concerned too that with people doing the more parking, because there hasn't been that much going on there, just here and there. So, people probably aren't familiar with the area. So, if you come into the farmer's market, which I like too, they're going to be using that parking lot. They can actually take a look around, and my place is like wide open. I have two grandchildren that live with me right now. And they're very young. One is ten months and one is four years. I'm a little concerned at what happened to, you know, with his children. And they're a little bit older than my grandchildren. So, that's my concern there, is that if they're going to case the joint, and like you said, nothing's been taken from my place. But like I said, I watch. And you'll see me go out there, and I go out there with my dogs. And I'll be out there sometimes, I don't go to bed till twelve, one, depending because I'm kind of a late person. And I'm always looking just to see what's going on. So, I'm very observant. So, that's what makes me worry about people getting to know it there. And then, they case up the neighborhood, and oh, next thing you know, my grill is gone or, you know, the kid stuff or, you know, my snow blower or whatever they break into the shit. I mean, it can happen, you know? So, that's my concern.
Of course.
But him, I worry about him more because I've seen them going up and down the driveway, and it's crazy.
And is it just the rate of speed at which that they're driving up and down the driveway?
Sometimes they do. Sometimes they do, or, like, you just don't know.
Sure.
You don't know.
Parking in the driveway use is absolutely open for conversation.
It's the back parking lot. Stop, excuse me, let, don't go. You'll have another chance.
And so, of course, anytime you see a parked car sitting, lingering for a couple of hours, anybody should alert the authorities, as anyone should when they have concerns about the safety of their family. This would attract the same members of the community that have been attending since we were at Ski Ward and outside the Senior Center. And if you want to talk about exposing people to a vulnerable population, we were right in the back door of the Senior Center. With zero issues, zero confrontations, these are your neighbors that are coming to this, that know where Veterans Inc. is anyway. So, that would be my only statement to try and dissuade some of your concerns, which I do respect.
State your name for the record, ma'am.
That's Jane Bryant. On the Commission on Disabilities. So, I would just like to, one, give testimony that when there was parking issues down at Ski Ward, Missy was right on it, worked with our commission to get the parking space a little bit more into compliance. So, if there is any issues, I can guarantee Mackenzie and Missy will be right on it. People love to attend the farmer's market. I have a daughter in a wheelchair. Trying to get her through Ski Ward was difficult at best. Senior Center, absolutely no issues. Veterans Inc., looks like it's going to be accessible for everybody to enjoy. You know, especially with the bus line. Some vendors take snap benefits. People can get fresh fruits and vegetables. This is a wonderful thing. And I also had a table right near the music. The last year, you guys were at Ski Ward. And I had no, and I had a table where I needed to talk to people all the time. I wasn't selling anything. It was for ballot question. And I could hold the conversation literally two tenths over from the music or maybe right next to it. No issues whatsoever. The music's nice and quiet, and I actually liked it. So, I just wanted to throw those two cents in. I mean, we need an accessible farmer's market. There's not a whole lot of options out there.
Thank you.
Can I address the young woman's in the back about the parking lot? One of the things, again, Mackenzie and I have, Mackenzie has been farmer market managers in inner cities. I've worked in drugstores in inner cities as retail manager and various other things. We have no problem with going up to someone and telling them they need to leave the property. We have no problem with calling the police. And if we need, you know, bodies behind us, I could tell you the name of five vendors who'd be right there behind us without any question. So, we have no fear of going up to someone and taking, looking into the situation. But we need to know about it. So, if you have a problem, and the other thing is that, we didn't mention this, is that at the beginning of the market season, we give all of our vendors a business card with our name and phone number on it, times of the hour in case they forget. So, our vendors know when and where to come. And if there's a problem, we can also be doing that to any Butters who want it as well. So, if you have a problem, call us rather than waiting the next day or if there's something, you know, see it, say it kind of thing that we can address or wait then and there. Because it may or may not be something with Veterans Inc., or it could be one of my customers, we don't know. But unless we, you know, know about it and address it, we don't know. The noise issue, again, the music was just a wish list kind of thing. Mainly because, like I said, I personally hate it. It's more work for me, it's more to coordinate. But the customers, that was one of the things they wanted, the music. You know, and being, you know, trying to be customer service oriented, giving the customers what they want kind of thing. So, that's why we were, you know, interested in having that. Again, I don't know how noise travels. I flunk physics, I don't know. But, you know, with where we are, whether it's on the stage or moving it somewhere further down, so maybe the acoustics are different, we'd be open to playing with moving it around if we wanted to give it a try. And again, I know from when they had the big events before, these were major, big, big band people, like, we're talking, we're talking like older guitar players playing Peter, Paul and Mary, Crosby, Stills and Nash. Bruce Andrews will play, you know, American folk songs kind of thing on a guitar. It's not anything beyond that. We've had other people approach us, but again, it's all very, very simple with a guitar vocal kind of thing, maybe a violin kind of thing. So, it's not that big thing.
I mean, I know for the fact, like, the music, when they have the music there, I have so many trees around my property that it blocks the sound. But when I've gone to them, like, you know, when they've had their events, and I've gone, you know, just up where Ernie lives there, it's so intense. But I can't hear where Ernie...
I think we've already established that it's going to be a different than what the music is. So, I'm not...
Yeah, yeah. So, music doesn't bother me at all.
Does anyone else wish to be heard? Before we close the hearing, what?
I have one more question.
Go right ahead.
From a business perspective, is it, it looks like it's about twelve to fourteen Wednesdays? Something like that?
Yes.
If you were to offer the farmer's market less than that, it would affect your business, correct? You wouldn't get as many vendors or they would go to some other farmer's market?
It would affect the business of the farmers. We don't make any money.
Well, the farmers, but your vendors may choose to just go to another farmer's market on a Wednesday, perhaps? Or maybe this is the only one offered Wednesdays? I know there's kind of a...
There's, the Grafton Market is also on Wednesdays. And in my experience, my some fifteen experience with farmer's markets, a twelve to fourteen week market is very short. That's the very, you're getting strawberries and greens through not even, maybe sugar pumpkins, not even a lot of your winter squash.
But we are talking twelve to fourteen?
We're talking twelve to fourteen.
Okay.
Anybody else before we close? Anyone else up here? Okay, there being no further questions or comments, we'll take it under advisement. You'll be notified about the decision.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you could take the conversations outside, you still have to conduct the rest of the meeting. Okay. Let's go in order. Forty-six Boylson Street. Come off there, anyone have an issue? It's going to be a traffic reduction. Because he's not going to go to his office.
Less traffic, yeah.
That's true. And there was no...
That's detrimental.
There was not a neighborhood of insight.
No.
Yeah.
So, I can't imagine that's a problem. So, I'm fine with doing this and sunsetting it with him.
We do that with all our special farmers.
Well, no, sometimes we do a time limit to have him come back if there's a problem. But in this particular one, I don't think it's...
That's okay.
I agree.
Yeah, I would move to grant the special.
Right.
And sunset it with his ownership.
Yeah.
His running of the business.
Second, because he moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, fifty-nine South Street, any discussion?
Sure. I would really love to have a place for the farmer's market. I am my number one concern. I have a few, but probably my number one is the noise. My number two would be, I feel it's easy to manage strangers in a residential neighborhood when it's just your homes and everybody's watching out for each other. I think it's very difficult when there's an influx of a number of strangers. So, I am concerned by that. I know we're talking farmer's market folks. But the one person in the audience mentioned people coming in, now being able to go in unnoticed to that parking area and looking around and looking for opportunities. So, I do feel that that is a concern. The odor from emptying the porta potties, that worries me too. I wish we could find a way around that. I'm less concerned about some of the other issues that were brought up. And lastly, the last time Veterans Inc. was before us for these outdoor festivals.
Yeah.
I had similar concerns, but I was more comfortable with granting that because if I can recall, and I could be wrong, it felt to me like there were going to be maybe four to eight events. Neighbors would be pretty much notified, they'd be notified now too because it's a regular thing.
One a month for a particular period.
And it worked out to be somewhere around. That...
It's like twelve.
I thought it was much less.
No, it was like April to September.
Yeah.
I'm going from memory.
I just felt it was a lot less, so I was more comfortable with it. And they were for fundraising.
So, here's...
So, anyway, that's all I had to offer at the moment.
Here's where I am. I think we should time limit it, give it one year. If there's noise, let them, you know, find out. I think we should restrict the one driveway, exit and entry from the one driveway.
We're on the same page.
Okay. And have a police detail at the first meeting and then, you know...
Periodically.
Period, I would say, no, I would say we either say the third or fourth.
Yeah, the fourth.
You know, either one, I'm not, you know, just, not the first one, but, you know, the first one. But in addition to that, either the third or fourth.
Name another one?
Name another one, yeah.
I have no problem so far, Ronnie.
Okay, and then, what was my other?
Music?
I'm not concerned about that. You know, I stand at farmer's markets, and it's not like they're having a rock and roll band out there. They're having a guitar player.
Tell them a guitar player.
Probably acoustic guitar.
It's an acoustic guitar.
This is like something you would hear in your living room.
Yeah.
It's really not...
Yeah.
Noise does travel. I did pass physics with flying colors. So, it is, it is going to be noisy. It just is. So, but it's not going to be as noisy as the previous festivals, granted. That is clear. But on a regular basis, for twelve Wednesdays during the summer months, it will be noisy.
One year time limit.
I agree.
And then, if it's a nuisance, if there's police complaints, we can, you know, it's a one-year time limit.
I'm fine with that if we...
Yeah, it gets turned off.
What about the porta potty? They need to have a bathroom.
By law, they have.
By law, they have.
I know. And here, they were able to use the facilities of the Senior Center. That's off, I guess, that wasn't negotiated with Veterans Inc.
Then the porta potty should be placed as far away from the residence. From the residence as it can be.
Well, I think we need to...
The one driveway.
I think we need to tell them.
Can we talk, sorry, about the one driveway?
Yeah.
They're proposing the entrance near, right near the forty-nine.
No, we're talking about just using the far driveway.
The far, farthest from me.
The one on the south.
Okay. So, but the reason they wanted this other one was for visibility and safety as people were coming out or something.
Right.
Okay.
Can have everything, but...
So we're, we're going up...
And then put up exit signs.
That's why I think you need a police detail.
Yeah. And then, I don't know, do we put the porta potty in the parking lot?
Where would you put it?
Well, that's pretty close to some homes, I'm sure.
No, I'm talking about all the way on the far side, far right corner.
Yeah, you're saying put it as, as easterly as possible.
As easily as possible.
As close to the building itself.
Right, right, right here, yeah.
Yeah, as close to the...
I have no problem with any of that.
Isn't that as, you know, where else?
That's, that's near Founders Grove, isn't it?
Is it?
No.
Well, there's a lot of tree, that's where all the trees are.
Founders Grove is across the street, is it right?
No, it's behind it.
It's behind it.
Come on, right over here.
Where?
It's away from one of the residences.
We're going to time limit it anyway, so we'll see.
Yeah.
If we're going to do it.
What is this season, the Founders Market?
It's the second Wednesday in June to the second Wednesday in October, and it's, that's twelve to fourteen Wednesdays.
So that's the period that we'll give them?
Yeah.
Is that okay with everyone? Do you agree with Lisa?
I agree with all, all those remarks. I don't have a problem with the music. And I think, I understand the car slamming doors, slamming the car doors in the parking lot. I think that's the greatest sound.
They can't help that.
Right.
Yeah, I know that, but I think that's the greater soundness, is from the event itself.
Some of our neighbors have, have a problem with their car doors. They have a fight with them every time they close them.
Can we say something about, or do you feel we should say something about putting cones and tape around the parking lot?
She said she would do that.
As she would, but can we stipulate that?
We can stipulate anything we want.
Well, I think, I think what she's talking about is the, well, or the, the gentleman was complaining about is that, that lawn area. People would tend to walk from the parking lot right across the lawn area.
Exactly.
And we want to ask them to stick to the pavement.
Yes.
Until they get to the other, until they get to the driveway.
So, so let's block off the lawn.
Yeah, let's block off the lawn, which is just south of the dr, of the parking area.
Yeah.
Uh, so, hire a traffic cop for the first market and the third or fourth.
Where the parking lot is, the existing tree line, that existing tree line.
Yeah, or, I think it's here, isn't it? Is it this, cut it from here?
Yeah, cut it from there.
So some type of...
So just stay on the pavement area.
Yeah. Put a rope up or something.
Yeah, it's, it, people will, who, 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 if you see, if you see the rope, they're going to be inclined to not park closer to that gentleman's home. They're going to be inclined to park closer to the driveway.
Right.
So that they don't have to walk back and around. So if that's cordoned off.
Yeah.
So I guess my concern was just, I, I don't want to put too much regulation on them. From the parking lot to where they're proposing to have the farmer's market, the closest residential of others, they would be walking away from their property anyways. So I guess...
Well, there's upper tents.
Rather than restricting movement on the property too much.
Or do we just?
I, I don't see them walking away from the property. I'm missing something.
Can we just draw a line right here?
So...
There's two sets of tents.
No, there's...
Right?
There's just one.
There's two. There's two sets.
So the, so the, the two sets, the two sets of...
Here and here.
The two sets of tents.
Yes.
The proposal for the, for the two sets of tents.
Yes.
My understanding for that
I thought they were just using the...
Is that they were looking for two options of where to place the tents.
Okay.
They wanted to ask for both, but they, they wanted to be the least impactful, so they provided options.
So yellow is the least...
Where the tents are going to be.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, so...
Well, there were two options. There were the blue and red, and now we're purple and yellow.
There's, there's one option.
So it's purple and yellow? We're making that clear?
Yeah.
So Chris's point is they're less likely, people are less likely to walk through the backyard to the green and blue tents, because they won't be there.
Kelly, you're confused?
So the...
I would still like...
So is that the concern if that was here? Is that was what his concern was?
I believe that would be the concern, because then
Okay, then...
They may go near the tree line, which is his property line.
Okay. Then it's not, then, then with the back one, it's not an issue. Okay.
That wasn't really clear that there was the optional locations.
Yeah, I was just strictly dealing with yellow and purple. Anything else? Any other stipulations? Did anyone have? Okay, you want to just go through what we got?
Yeah. So, the conditions that I have here, the first one was discussed during the conversation, that the contact information of the market managers would be provided to the building inspector.
Right.
The second condition would be that a police detail would be provided at the first, uh, market.
Instead of the fourth.
In the fourth.
Yeah.
Market. The...
And if recommended by...
Right, and if recommended, right, right, right.
And if recommended by the officer, that, that does the detail. The third condition would be that they would return after a year to seek approval to continue the use.
Right.
The fourth condition would be that the porta potty would be located at the northeast corner of the parking lot, furthest from the residence. And then I believe we specified the months to be...
I, I think, I, I think that should be the, the east corner.
Yeah.
As opposed to north.
Yeah, north is closest to the residence.
Yeah, yeah.
I call this the northeast corner. I call this the east corner.
Okay, that, yeah, that was the corner.
Just make sure they know which one we're talking about.
So the fourth farmer's market is... I'm sorry?
Yeah, driveway. I'm sorry, driveway.
Only one drive, only one driveway in and out.
South side of the...
Yeah.
And be it, be it the most southernly driveway.
Correct.
And just so we know, the fourth farmer's market day is fourth of July, when we want the, that's how it plays out.
Does it?
Yes.
Maybe we should do it on the third.
I'm wondering.
Yeah, yeah. Make it first and third.
First and third.
Yeah. I somehow am less optimistic than they are that it's going to be busy.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Yeah, people take off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. Anything else? Can I get a motion?
Did we want to, uh, put any restriction on the hours of the, uh...
Stipulated.
Stipulated.
Two thirty to, two thirty to six thirty. No, no, two thirty.
I thought she said four thirty to six thirty.
Two thirty to six thirty.
That's the music. The music is four thirty to six thirty, but the market is...
An hour ahead, an hour at the back to set up and take it down. Yeah.
So the, yeah, so the market will operate two thirty
To six, to six thirty.
Six thirty.
An hour before it is set up and an hour after it is breakdown.
And, uh, the music will be from four thirty to six thirty.
Yeah. Doesn't matter.
I don't, I don't, I don't...
Yeah, that's what they asked for. I know, but what's the difference?
That's what they asked for.
I know, but, well, it doesn't matter.
They suggest that's when they're usually having.
Yeah, we don't need the conditions on that. Just during the, the operating hours.
Operating hours.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Okay, now can I get a motion?
I move to approve with the conditions as we've outlined.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Oh, and also about, that was for the special permit.
Oh, the sign.
There's a sign. I don't think, is there anything that we need to discuss about that?
There's already a sign there for their festivals and things like that.
This is, this is a temporary sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was thinking of it.
In regards to that, one of the optional language that I proposed for the signage would be, along with, we can tie it either to the hours that they are operating, that they need to remove the sign. They did suggest that they would like to leave the sign there on the property and remove it seasonally, if possible.
I'm fine with that, because we're only doing this for one year.
Yeah.
At the moment, and I, I don't have a problem with this.
So the language that I drafted was that the proposed signage shall be allowed during the operation of the farmer's market, but shall be removed at the end of each season.
Yep. Did they say what kind of signage?
Sounds good to me.
The dimensions, I believe...
Yeah, they were there.
Were very small.
Uh, four by eight, I believe.
Yeah.
Was that big, was it?
It was...
I didn't have an issue with it. Here it is.
Approval to have a lawn sign no larger than four foot by eight foot. To be set back at least three feet from the south street roadway, or two lawn signs. Two lawn signs, kind of vague.
Well, let's do the...
The four foot by eight.
Four foot by eight, and, and it's movable, right?
Well, well...
Do we want, I don't know if we, do we want to leave it?
As discussed, they would leave it there, essentially.
For the season.
For the season.
Okay. I don't think that's true. I agree with that. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, for the season, right.
Yes.
So, motion, approve this, the variance for the sign. As stipulated, second, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Uh, you want to pass that down?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, the second one is...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What happens during a season if complaints come about?
Well, that's what we deal with. You know, that's just, that becomes a police issue, that becomes something else, and then the next year, when they have to come back to...
When they apply again.
Apply again, then, then we, that's what we take into account.
And they start looking for another location.
I would suggest that would be where the, um, information of the, of the market managers would come in handy to address if need be.
Any old business, any new?
Yeah, we have exactly the same session, don't we?
No, we don't.
No?
No. That was one of the draft minutes. Okay. As soon as I get that. So forty-six Boylston Street was, for an in-home business, was unanimously approved. Fifty-nine South Street, special permit, variance with conditions, the U2 didn't sign the second one, there are two sheets in here, variance and special permit.
Oops.
Honey, shush.
I need those little stickies.
Yeah. Special permit was unanimously approved with conditions.
Signed variance.
And the sign was approved unanimously. Can I get a motion?
Move to adjourn.
I get second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.